This is an unedited recording of the full meeting. Public comments are held at the end of the meeting. Thank you for watching. Please hit the like button and leave a comment. It really helps the algorithm. If you haven't already, please subscribe to the channel and hit the notification bell to get all the upcoming videos from our channel. Thank you and enjoy the video.
All right, following the order, please stand for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for the casting of the former chief of police, Charles McAndrews. Please take your seats. Roll call, please. Ice, sir. Savage, here. Roche, here. Bornhard, here. Martino, here. Is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time? I make the motion for the approval of minutes and reports from July 8th and 22nd, meetings and reports to the fire department, police department, treasurers, office controller, code office, staff department, parking rack, and planning commission. Do I have any second? Martino.
Yes.
Ice. Savage.
Yes.
Bornhard.
Yes.
Yes. I currently adjourn this meeting for CDPG bunching of Shawn.
All right, tonight we're going to have our first public hearing for the 2024 CDPG meeting of the block grant program here at the city. As you know, probably if you've been here before the tree development block grant was created through the act of Congress, these funds come through the federal government, through the market of housing and urban development, down to the confluence of Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania Act 179 creates the entitlement grant program for counties and municipalities through the district through DCEP, through DCEP. 2024 CDPG allocation for the city is $308,529, which is a slight decrease from last year. There was a decrease across the board, so it was not just the city. The key dates for the application are included in your packets there. There's some around if you haven't seen them. The program basically allows the city to fund eligible and fundable projects, projects that are eligible under CDPG, including things like infrastructure improvements, community centers, historic preservation, economic development activities, and home service projects. Infrastructure meaning things like roads, water, sewer, those kinds of infrastructure. Basically, it's easier to say what's not fundable, which is our illegal activities, maintenance and operating expenses, equipment, and then any other general government function, general government expense. The bigger hurdle to meet when funding a CDPG project is fundability, which has to meet a national objective, one of three. We have the most common, which is benefit to low, moderate income people. That means 51% or more of the people benefiting from the project has to be considered low, moderate income, which 70% of the city's funds every year must be used on a project that meets this national objective. Current income levels are set by how they're section eight home income limits. The next national objective you could meet is elimination of smaller buildings. We've done in the past. We've agreed on it already to eliminate light structures. You can use 30% of your funds for that national objective. The other national objectives that could be met is the response to an urgent need, such as what we did with COVID, that is used very frequently because it does have to be some sort of emergency declared, and these two need some specific requirements to qualify as urgent need. Right now, the project summary packets are out to the municipal authority and different nonprofits across the city. I have not received any calls or inquiries yet. The only project I am aware of at this point is the Susquehanna Avenue stormwater and sewer separation phase two project. If anyone's interested in filling out the project's commission form, you can get in touch with me and I can assist you with that. They're due August 23rd. Eligible applicants are generally in the city nonprofits and authorities. The county has their CDPG program. Those can go to the municipalities outside of entitlements, like the city of Sunbury, but the city does get their own funding, so any nonprofits or authorities can apply for that. There's no match requirements associated with CDPG, but entities that do apply will be expected to contribute financially to their projects. And if you want to submit an application, please do so with complete detail as outlined on the agenda. The fair housing notice is also included in the packet. The city has adopted and published a fair housing analysis and established a plan to further ensure fair housing in the city. The anti-displacement plan is also attached to the agenda and available. It's the intent of the city of Sunbury to undertake CDPG projects that do not result in displacement of residents. If displacement were to occur for some reason, that plan does explain how that needs to be handled. The next regulatory item is the Section 3 records statement, which is on the bottom of the agenda for this hearing and available if you want to see it. Basically, the CDPG program provides benefit to Section 3 residents or businesses who are interested in participating in CDPG projects. If you think you or someone you know might be in a Section 3 individual or business, please let me know. The final regulatory item we have to talk about at the hearing is the Section 504 plan. Section 504 outreach is done on behalf of the city. Section 504 is a program that crosses all federal programs, so it is access to city-owned facilities and programs. Does anybody have any comments or concerns about accessibility to city-owned facilities or programs at this time? Today's public hearing is the first step to involve in completion of a three-year plan for the city of Sunbury, which gets submitted to DCEP as part of the CDPG application process. That plan will be approved by city council at that time. We review some previously funded projects and seek information for new projects. So previously funded projects include the Reagan Street flood mitigation, which was funded with the city's 2018 through 2020 entitlement allocation, as well as a competitive grant, and also the 2021 and CB coronavirus CDPG program funded Sweets project. 2021 and 22 funds are being used for Phase One of the Susquehanna Avenue project. Are there any comments or questions, concerns about any of these projects? Does anybody have any new projects they would like to submit for consideration at this time?
Jamie, I have a quick question. Is there a certain timeframe if this air project were to get approved that the month of funds have to be? Obviously, there is, but how long do they have to pay the funds to be spent?
So, for example, this evening is our first step in the 2024 process. We will apply for those funds by November 1st of this year. We will not have the contract for those funds until around this time next year. So then we can actually get started, and then they need to be expended in three years. So it will be '25 when we see them, so '28 will be the expend date for those funds. Anybody have any questions, concerns about historical or environmental impacts associated with any CDPG-funded projects? Anything else? Another part of our hearing tonight is to discuss a CDPG discretionary application, which is the competitive program. So right now, the city does intend to apply for discretionary grants through CDPG, which offers an opportunity for communities to apply or to compete for funding for larger projects. Right now, we're looking at anywhere from a million to $3 million for the CDPG competitive, depending as we work through the budget and other funding available. Basically, the problem and solution for Susquehanna Avenue Phase Two is the same as for Phase One. We need to separate the sewer from the stormwater, replace aging infrastructure, and put the street back. We're looking at doing that as economically as possible. Right now, we are aware of appropriations from Senator Muser's office. Three years of CDPG entitlement funding, municipal authority funding, the CDPG competitive we're discussing right now, multi-mobile transportation funding, and state H2O grant funding that may be available for this project. Demonstrating community support is always important for these competitive applications. So as we act in Phase One, if anybody would like to offer some support, you could send a letter to me or drop it off here at the city, and I can get it to include in our application. I can provide you with information. Derek could provide information if you want something to put in that letter. So the more support we get, the better. We will be asking for support from our local legislators as well. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, anything they'd like to address?
I hear guidelines on, you said, infrastructure. So if I had something that I thought was important, it was up in the water, some people, and we're on the market, and said, I think this is...
Well, if you had something that you thought, like, you could bring it to city council, you could bring it to me, and we could consider it. Like, if it's a city-owned street, infrastructure, that would, of course, be the city to consider. Anything else? I mean, if anybody has any thoughts, questions, ideas, you're more than welcome to bring them to me or, you know, write to Derek, and he can get to me if it's something CDPG could be used for, and I'm more than happy to go over with it.
Absolutely.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much. You can read your reading.
Thank you, Jamie. All right, I reconvene the council meeting. Roll call, please.
Ice. Savage.
Here.
Roche.
Here.
Bornhard.
Here.
All right, some updates here. Fire department consolidation.
We missed a couple of moments, but we don't need to be in the morning. My scope will be moving now.
Jamie, can we do them now, so we can get out of here? That's okay.
I'm going to wait. That is most exciting.
So the other thing I have on the agenda tonight are a couple of scopes of services. These are basically just for your information. So every year, when we get started on the process, we always go over with you what our scope of services will be for that process. You never approve or sign any contracts until we actually get in the contract. So right now, we're getting the 2023 contracts, and later we'll be bringing you our actual agreement pretty soon. But for 2024, for your regular entitlement program, the price has stayed the same. It is the $50,000 it has been for the last several years. Services remain the same. Does anybody on council have any concerns or questions about the services that we've been providing? And then the other one you have is for the competitive. So this is if we were to get a competitive grant award for the Susquehanna Avenue Phase Two, this social services would be what we would base our agreement on, or that, if it does happen. If it does not come to fruition, we will not obviously do the agreement for it. But that one is the $75,000. And again, it's just, it's a lot more work to put together a discretionary competitive application than to do with the entitlement process. I'm happy to entertain questions or concerns of competitive.
Anyone?
Awesome, thank you.
No, thank you, Jamie. All right. Now, update, fire department consolidation.
I'll come up here because everyone knows I'm not very loud. Rick Shonore, Sunbury Fire Department, with updated consolidation. We had a meeting with the county EMA director. He is going to check with the commissioners if they'd be interested in coming along with us in potential future building. It's all very tentative, but when you go for funding for these things, the more groups you put together, the more funding you can likely get. At this point, all six companies are in on consolidation, but there's one thing we're getting pointed at where we have to separate the company assets from the fire assets, and the companies are asking if city council can help us with that with some funding.
How much?
So, well, it's going to cost anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 per company. So I know your science, but that's $60,000 total max. All my lawyer fees, all these stuff.
That sounds like a code issue, so you got to figure that out.
Yeah, that's what we spitball. But hopefully, as long as everyone kind of comes to agreement, we're not taking any stuff, plus work for lawyers. Two fifty hours, I think it is. Plus work for them. So the companies are looking for some help with the funding. The city could help us out, and that would be great. One of the ways that I would like to do it is that the companies agree that they're definitely in with consolidation and they're in, then they can get help on the funding. If you guys can do a resolution or whatnot, that works on the council end. That way, you don't just give them $5,000 here, and then they decide to actually run for the consolidation. That was one of the reasons I'm trying to set this up, so that everyone can spend all this money is definitely in. I don't want to spend money that's going to waste.
When's the breaking point, you'll say, for a company is not in or out at that point? I mean, you got...
We're about that point.
Okay.
I mean, until, what we're going to do is break down the assets, see what goes where, and then the companies, one of the things we're going to draw up is a lend-lease agreement with all the companies. Basically, we'll say, you know, fire apparatus, the equipment that will go to the new fire departments. And then the companies will have to agree to house that equipment, because obviously, we don't indulge until, hopefully, a future station can be built. So at that point, when they sign on that dotted line, then it's all going to be a legal agreement, so you don't have, you know, one month you committed, they say one thing, and next month they say something different. That's really the breaking point to me. But at this point, I think this is the best inflection point because order depends on serious money. So if you're going to send serious money, you want to make sure you're in for the whole.
What name would you come up with?
Sunbury Regional Volunteer Fire Rescue. So the fire department of overall. We bounce around like six different things, but that's the one they settled on. We thought the regional was important because, let's face it, everyone in the fire service is going to regional work right now. We're going to Shamookan, Olga, Snyder County, Nori. And they're coming to us, too, because we just don't have that many people. We don't have enough resources. Friday was a good example. We were out in Front Street getting drenched, and we had no family come over to help us out, Shamookan Dam, because the few people we had available during the day shift on Friday were already died up. And I'm thinking as this grows, a lot of places have already gone to regionalization, in other states, other areas. We're a little behind in current, but we tend to be ultra-conservative, so it's not surprising. So I'm trying to push early next year to kind of get this to the next, okay, things ready to go, let's get this going. Because from a management standpoint, then the way the system's set now is the chief has control when the pager goes off. The chief doesn't have control before the pager goes off. So with this new system, the chief, the chief's staff, the captains, the lieutenants, will have the authoritative control to manage the whole fire service, with the several things, and making changes for a better future, hopefully more positive active future. Does anybody have any questions?
Has there been a location? I know there's been some locations thrown out there, yeah.
No, and at this point, I've decided to concentrate less on that. We got to get the consolidation done, and then we can get into the location, location, location. Everyone, you put 10 people in a room, they're going to come up with 11 different locations they like. So I decided this one, I just let that dog lie for now. And we got to get together as a group, so that's consolidate, but the new fire department, decide that and say, you know...
This is the ideal spot for everyone involved.
Yeah. And one of the aspects, we're setting up an advisory board for the fire department to include people from all the stakeholders, companies, city councils, townships, and mutual legacy companies to advise the fire department. Just to keep an eye on them, maybe quarterly, and make sure their budgets are okay. We want to know the formal budgets, instead of a more formal system. That's right. Most companies don't operate that way. They get more streamlined, if we can come here and say, okay, here's our budget, here are our needs, what can you help us with? If it's something where you guys have expectations. The good thing is, all the companies are going to come in or going to cover all their apparatus. So the city is getting a heck of a bargain because fire trucks are on the cheap side, $750,000 to over $1 million. So all that equipment is coming in already paying for. Now, that's a boon. Unlike our brother police officers, who for $60,000, you can put that in wheels, we all go cheap.
But what you're saying is, we all go more expensive on the police, eh?
I do like that, yeah, of course. I'd say I'm not shocked, but that would be a bad pun. But anyways, so that's one thing first. And if you look at municipal budgets, fire, police budgets, often the fire budget is more than the police budget. And that's manpower, labor, you know, salaries, and the equipment, and the training. And that's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to keep it as a volunteer system for as long as we can because I pay taxes, I pay taxes, I'm a customer. But anyway, I pay taxes here and don't want to, you know, I'd rather support it physically than financially.
I keep beating this up, I know I do, but... Yeah. In your plans, or do you have any plans to get the youth involved? Because if we, you could have consolidated, have all the nice fire trucks...
We've had this conversation multiple times, this is Bornhard, and I'm going to tell you again. Our people meeting with the high school principal and the superintendent, and they're working on a plan for this fall. I told you this three or four times now. It's in the plan.
It just concerns me that...
What concerns me? I'm 58 years old and still doing this. I think it was around 15 years ago.
I thought you were in your 60s, but okay.
But seriously, yeah, they're working, we're working on that. We're working on all the avenues. Because quite frankly, no matter what it is across our society, nobody volunteers any, whether it's coaching, whether it's fire, whether it's church, whether it's... People don't volunteer. The society goal, the values of this change, for one reason or another, and fire services, where we're seeing, where they can't, because that's what we rely on. And, you know, we're fortunate with what we have here in the city, but it's, you know, we have a senior citizen crew during the day, we call it. And I'm the young guy, so I guess, you know, that's what we're getting it done.
If you can keep me updating, is there anything I can do to help you with that?
Okay, yeah, yeah, they should be meeting, I think, in late August at Earl, because we'll kind of get set for fall. They get to see what we can work with the administrative. They were very receptive to it. So hopefully, that will get rolling. And it was a slow start up in Danville, which is what we've all seen. They were, but if you get the kids in, get their hands on some stuff, let them have some fun and some exposure. I think it'll be a good thing. That's when I started, when I was 14 years old. That's when a lot of us, old timers, were still around, sorry. Because they knew me better, and we thought it was all fun. And now some of us just can't quit because...
It's still fun.
It's still fun. Well, most of them. It was the Friday morning when I was around, standing on Front Street. But anyways, yeah, it still is fun.
We used to have those things where it's valuable at all.
We used to do that, yeah.
And maybe you need something that I can give you.
We discussed that, yeah. There's not a lot of fun stuff left because it's hard enough to get people because we're running a pool of fundraising. A lot of the firefighters are working, running their clubs. 20 years ago, you had like two separate groups of people, actually three ladies like Hillary. The club people, the ladies like Hillary, then you had the fire people. Well, now that group has been whittled down, and now that one group is doing everything. And yes, I would love to be doing that fun stuff, but...
I need to engage.
Oh, yeah, oh, I agree. That was part of the fun stuff. We had a, you know, we had a lot of fun. Spencer remembers that. But... Hand pumper, right? Right? But, yeah, we had a lot of fun with that. So, yeah, that's something, you know, we want to try and get back to. That's why hopefully, the fire club could get us a start and get us some young people. If there are any questions, shout out.
Josh, I'm kind of funny. Yep, or if you want to volunteer, contact him. Well, anyone, yeah. All right. They want, we'll take Jack, too, by the way.
If you're going to want that, technical question. For the possibility of you doing a fire reform, where you get a way to tax, you know, if you want to take this...
It would have to be a fee. The, I don't think that would be possible. The, as far as fire authority, I've never heard of it, but I can research it, but you know. I don't know, because the municipal authorities are established by statute.
He's back.
The municipal authority was established by statute. I'm not telling you there's not a statute that says you can establish fire authority, but I've never seen it, I've never looked at it.
Fire EMS authorities are a new wave, that's a major. They're established in many places. Basically, what happens is each taxable property gets billed X amount of dollars a year, whatever it is, and then that's your budget setup. There'd be a separate authority board, which like the one by the municipalities. So it is something that's new. EMS is where it started because everyone thinks when they call 911, there's going to be an ambulance show. Let's hope so, let's pray. But bottom line is, someday it'll become an analysis, just like some vision on fire trucks, or blue stars. But, yeah, the authority is definitely something that we may have to look at down the road because we're going to need some sort of sustainable funding. Because the fire service can no longer be supported by the local clubs.
Would that be something, Rick, that you want before or after the creation of the new entity?
Everything we need to do, we need to create the entity, and then go, because everyone says, where are you at? When I talk to a, I'm at some user's office, and they say, where are you at? Let us know what your target date is, and then we can go from there. So we have to do a new entity, and then do that. That's why budget-wise, we will be okay budget-wise for a year or so, which is what we have figured. But after that, because we're going to, somebody's going to have to start banking money for capital improvement.
Right.
Because we can't come to council and say, I need $800,000 fire truck management. Yeah, I'll suggest things, or anything else up there.
Man, that's all code, because that's his issue.
It's all code.
That's code.
But, yeah, and the fire authority, EMS authority, is one of the avenues that a lot of people are familiar with.
Well, I'll definitely look into it. And, you know, you guys are ready for that. Frank will let me know, whoever know, and I'll get something beautiful.
Yeah, because our consultant that will work on it is on several of them across the state. And they seem to be working well, but as we know, sometimes the relationship with authority can be plus minus. And, yes, as, you know, by the way, you need to, people need to pay fee for their fire protection, and that's basically what it is. Because the city government, any municipal government can go and report. And it's just, there's just too much. And third-class city code, there's a lot of fire tax, which I don't know why that is, but that's a mic stander question. We yell him for that. He's not there. But, yeah, so thanks for bringing that up.
Anything else on fire department consolidation? All right, moving on to old business, Alatus Transportation. So there was an article in the newspaper how Alatus Transportation will be kicking off here in Sunbury come November 4th to December 14th. That's like the pilot program to see what routes were best. They did establish some, you know, drop-off locations and pickup locations in Sunbury, also over to Shamookan Dam. They're going to see what routes work the best in that pilot program. And then come beginning of next year in March, they'll have the exact route designated to the exact drop-off, pickups times, and things like that. So just wanted to give a public, an update on that system. This company here in November, I said we'll post that in City Hall and also on our city website as well. It will run six days a week, and it is handicap accessible as well. So all those things will be coming here shortly. Jeff, did I miss anything? I know you were in the email. All right, any questions on the? Sixty five and older, yeah, John, I don't quite qualify yet, but hopefully someday. All right, any other questions on that? All right, uh, moving on, Councilman Iser, your city properties are for sale.
Yes, we have roughly, there's seven ownership on hole two forty to Church Street, which is going to be gone six. These properties have been, in the city's call for, for years, uh, a couple of them are within the last two years, it's somewhere between twenty years old, saying they're not doing anything, so. We're going to be getting that list together, which we have a list of posting that, more than a date for our sale. Next, also in two twenty six, we're going to take a, a date sale, and at least advertise those for thirty days prior to the, by regular.
That's correct.
Okay, so, next council meeting, the date will be listed, and where, the location of the sale looks like the year, instead of driving around lot to lot. And, uh, there's two of them possibly can be building lots, other ones are smaller, a few parcels where homes are torn down, with the setbacks where they can't build. So, these lots will be coming up, and I'm pretty sure they're within a year.
Do you anticipate an auction or a close bid, or are you?
I probably have an auction, you said you'd be the auctioneer, right?
I don't remember that, but I can.
Is that a year and, uh, is it the public plan, time period?
Should we vote on the property, or who can make the next council meeting?
I, I would, the next council meeting, we'll advertise it, it's held in the city.
All right.
You may want to sit over there.
Yeah. Anything else, Councilman Iser? Any questions on those properties? All right, moving on, new business, uh, Councilman Barnhart, any IC contract?
I make the motion to approve the NEIC contract, which they're going to be handling all the zoning and the, uh, uh, health inspection zoning and, and planning.
Yes.
So they're going to be handling that, we will maintain property inspections.
Any questions?
Yes, with any thought of the outcome also, the, at least the backup to the rental.
I, at this time, I don't think we're going to need that, because there, I think Kane's going to.
I remember talking to Councilman Barnhart that, you know, if worst case comes to worst, that we have to go that route, they were, Jack and them were already made aware.
Yeah.
But, you know, it is, you know, worst case scenario, if we have to, that option is there, but as of right now, he thinks we can handle it now, so. Is he a motion to accept the contract?
I don't have a motion.
Second. Martina.
Yes.
Iser.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Broches, yes. Barnhart.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Barnhart.
Habitat for Humanity, uh, Mike, you want to, might as well give a vote on it at the same time.
All right, twelve fourteen, the Lime Street, this was a subdivision, um, it was actually last fall, it took them a while to do some agreements and get some signatures, but, uh. On September twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, council approved the three waivers that are requested, followed by September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, the planning commission recommended conditional plan approval, condition upon Mactex comment letter dated August thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Those conditions have now been met, and our office recommends, uh, approval as well. So that's what we're looking for, if you're looking for any questions.
Make them into a motion for.
Either the print two be signed.
Subdivision.
Yeah.
Was that, which part was that?
Those, the stone fortress, right here, and this one. The reason you, I just kind of did a re-subdivision, they added on this piece here from Drive. This piece from Drive, I added two, and this one, the, yeah, it's out here. And so the parking agreement is tied into Drive, that's all referenced on here as well.
Who was forming this report?
Is he a motion?
I make a motion to a branch or subdivision.
Second. Iser. Savage.
Yes.
Broches.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Next is going to be the Stormwater Waiver, Miss Merzpappus Church on Fourth Street, um, we recommend a table lead at this time, I did just receive revised planning calculations this afternoon, it looks good. Um, so I have to get that over to municipal authority, if they bless it, then we'll be back here in two weeks, uh, for that waiver.
Make a motion to table that.
Second. Martina.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Iser. Barnhart.
Yes.
Broches.
Yes. Are you going to, the other to get these signed?
Yep.
All right, we'll get those signed. All right, thanks, I appreciate it. Uh, Councilman Barnhart, keep going.
Before I make this motion for background checks, I want to explain the reasons, it's, we're not trying to tell anybody who they can or can't rent to. This is more for the safety of, of the residents and, and the homeowner, Chief, you want to expand on, what we talked about, about the background checks?
I guess, I wasn't here last meeting, uh, I was on vacation actually for, for this last one, but when we had spoke about the, um, background checks, it's not a background check in my opinion, you know, speaking of codes. It's to look at somebody and their background, the kind of criminal past they have, but more of that is being done by the property owner. My belief with doing this is, if we know who's in the house, and we know who basically is, you know, whether it's two, two adults, three kids, we can pull up on the scene. If that information is in the database, and we have that correlation with codes, which is a system that we're looking at, being able to have that, that interface. We'd be able to pull up to a scene and say, there's two, there's two adults, three children in this house, whether it's the fire department, or the security department, whether it's the police department. Um, I'm all about, you know, I know from, from what I heard from the last meeting, you know, there was a big concern about background checks of, of who you're putting in there, whether this person's, uh, drug, you know, has drug activity, has. Nothing for that, because I'm a big believer in the refill page, and I believe in second chance, so if that's where people think that that, you know, the police department, it's not for that, it's more for the safety, uh, knowing who's in the house. Knowing, you get down the street, you take us way on Avenue, you take us in Avenue, you go down through there, you know who's renting, who's not renting, we go to houses with the police department where we go and there's fifteen people in a house. I mean, we've been, we've been to a lot of houses in town, where there's mackings just laying on the floor, you know, who don't have a great connection with, you know, who the renters are, and I don't know where that comes from actually. But I think what we're trying to do is, you know, you get the information, it's all that, it's all the landlord, the basically, the renter, to do the background check. If they don't do a background check, they put somebody in, well then, there's different consequences with the point system, but with the background check, never would I openly believe that we're trying to figure out who's in the house because of the drug related this or that. It's more aligned to the safety issue.
Chief has a question, nothing to interrupt you, but, right now, there's a landlord who has to provide foot arrests, anybody over eighteen, John Mark, correct?
Yep.
Okay, and they have to give a list of all the children, and their ages under eighteen, and that's provided to the office, which is, you have access to. So you pull up and I see him, bring that street, and you just look at it, Tom Doe, Mrs. Doe, so forth, living in that house, you have their names, addresses, ages, social. Driver's license, number out, what else should be?
That's what I need to know, I need to know where he do that.
Yeah, but, yeah, but what happens, somebody does that, Jim, and then, three months down the road, oh, I got a friend coming up here to live with me, then they don't report it. Now you have somebody there, and you don't know who's living there.
Wait a second, how's a background check prevent that?
Well, let's say the person they, they had come live with them, you can rent to wherever you want, but if you do a background check and you see somebody has two felony warrants from Philadelphia, you rent to them if you want. But then, the, the code would know that there's two, and then we're going to tell the chief, but you can rent to them if you want, or somebody on Megan's list, you can rent to whoever you want to rent to, that, it's, it's sort of like you. You buy a car, you check the car facts, right, you know, just go buy the car, I, now that's, my opinion is, it's, it's for the safety of everybody, if you have nothing. I think this, if you're running, you do a background check, and you knew, you know who you're running to, and you do a background check, no big deal, but it, it just seems like if you're doing something. I wouldn't say shady, but you don't care, and then that happens, somebody moves in your property, and then they get busted, you know, get arrested for something, and here, like I said, they have warrants or something, now you're going to get twelve points for your property. You get more than twelve points in a year, we can pull your renters permit.
Wait a second, you're missing the point, you have the information the chief was said he needs.
It also, you also have to go back and look at, for the rental properties, we have to go and inspect them. For the safety of our own employees, it's good to know what situation they've been walking into, for example, we have male and female, uh, code officers. For example, you know, we, I'm just teasing, yeah, we go, we call, because I'm a landlord, I have background checks, I have no issues submitting background checks to see, I have nothing to hide. So for example, if I, Josh Broches, whatever, home property, all right, there's a male individual there that has clean record, no individual, okay, maybe it's okay to only send one individual there for, to do the inspection. But if an individual does have a prior record, maybe a female may not feel comfortable going there by herself, or a male going there by herself. Sometimes they do call the police officers when they go to uncomfortable properties because of the past history there, this is going to help with the safety, now, a lot of, there's a lot of great landlords in the city of Sunbury, there's also some that don't.
You're open to your own, for the landowners there.
But we're not, we're not saying no one cannot, what we're saying, you can rent to anyone who you desire, we're not saying you cannot, as it goes back to a safety thing, we got to look out for the safety of our own personnel, and also. When, when the chief said, when there's an issue, have, who's living there, because many times, there will be situations where three people are registered, and there's ten people living there, it's a, it's a safety thing, we're trying to be safe.
But then you have to get them to communicate with the code office, who's living there, because you can, we do a background check, but if you don't give that information to him.
Well, that's.
It's the same, what's the same thing, but every year, they send a form out, how many people are living in this?
Yeah, I mean, that's the same thing, so when you do your background check, you just turn that.
What are the chances are those people don't even fill that form out every year, are going to tell you how many people are living in there.
Well, I mean, that goes back to what we have in place right now with the nuisance abatement, like, when these things happen, you get so many points, go on the nuisance list, you lose your rental permits, and, you know, and. The biggest thing is, everyone knows, if it hits you in the wallet, people are going to start thinking twice, and that's the whole.
I mean, I don't, as a landlord, as a homeowner or whatever, I don't see how you can't do a background check, you want to know who's living in your property.
Exactly, and that's what we're saying, like, we are agreeing, we just want to have it on.
Are you going to get into legal issues, asking for that information from landlords?
I mean, what's the difference, we ask for your driver's license, we ask for social security number, ask for your driver's license number, it's just.
We're going to give you the tools to do it, I mean, just so you can do it for nothing.
Okay, you can, you don't have to pay them.
You go find an answer to background check, and you move to the scene, we need to the house, and at least assign by that name and number in the house, and it's up to anybody there to point that, but when you get into us, if somebody might have no record before. You cannot do that, because you're stepping on a constitutional.
But what are we, what are we doing, I'm saying, like, we're just getting a, it's like, for example, if you apply for the city with the background.
General information, but you can't go dig into.
Oh, no, it's just like the PA background check, yours, like, for example, as you said, you do, you do one, I do one, all right, here's a form, I'm turning in with my reports, it just goes right in the file, that's it.
Yes, it's much public knowledge.
And it's no different, like, when you apply for the job for the city, it's the same, exactly, we require background checks, more in depth than this PA one.
We're not telling you who you can and can't rent to, you rent to wherever you want to.
How often are you going to require it?
My own opinion, and I know John and I spoke, I think that.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be the, the other guy, but when you get into that, there's a fine line between the, somebody comes in, you're going for a criminal background check, whether it's financial or whatever, that is, that is not, that is not required, but that's up to the police department to figure that out. That is not for a landlord to figure out.
Well, like I said, we're just, it's just like, I just, oh, go ahead, Nick, sorry, was your question answered?
I just want to know how often you want to ask for background checks, how are you going to, are you going, like, I think there's a whole, like, how often are you going to do it? How do you want to do it, with your family, how about someone that's been ready to for thirty years, that has never had an issue, like, I think there's just. I'm not saying there's really necessarily anything wrong with it, if you go through a realtor, I'm sure they do background checks, I just think there's a lot of, a lot of unknowns that aren't answered, to be able to do this project.
Here's a perfect example, down, and the one where there's, there was multiple families living in one house, and what they said is, long as that square living space, it doesn't matter where they're sleeping, as long as they have that square footage, they should be there. I think, I don't.
I, I, I think.
And I was told by the code office before, because I had turned it in about there, because there was other stuff going on.
I don't think we can, I think we'll look further in that situation, but I don't believe that to be true.
I don't think you can have like twelve people living in a three bedroom house.
Well, that is, is that important?
Well, like I said, what, yeah, I'd say, like, you know, they don't, I would have to, yeah. Yeah. So my own opinion is, this stuff in the code office, my own opinion would be to do it yearly, because for example, if you do a, let's say, for example, you have a two, you have a two unit one. If you do one year one, and do one year two, when they're going into the code office, it's going to be confusing, what's, what is it, what is it? My opinion is, when you're turning it in, it should be a yearly thing, and people are complaining, they'll say it's twenty dollars. If you're a landlord, and you worried about the twenty dollars for a background check to make sure what's going on, you're not.
We make it today.
Exactly, and people do that.
My next question though, is the enforcement, because we do have a procedures in place with the driver's licenses, with many things, which I know, knowing, there's not, the outreach is not there, like, I don't think this outreach is not the right word, but. That enforcement of that, that punishment, if they don't do what they're supposed to do, how's that going to be enforced, and how is this going to be any different than what is happening there?
If you do a background check, necessarily every year, and you, somebody isn't, will comply, then you, you're telling me, I, I want to rent to anybody, I mean, you can rent to anybody, but, but then you're not, it's just the same as not turning in an ID form.
But see, a lot of, that's my problem, a lot of that is happening, and we don't know it till there's a problem, we're not going to know there's a problem, because you, even if you do a background check and somebody has an issue, you can't do anything about it. So we're not going to know there's a problem until chief has to go and there's a problem, it's no different than what we're doing right now, we can't fix something if we don't know it's a problem, and I don't think we follow through on the things we have now, to keep adding things to.
The things you're talking about now?
No, I just meant like now, with the driver's license, if we can't use that, or make sure that somebody turns in who's supposed to be there now, how are we making someone do a background check? Because now we're going to charge them to do a background check, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with background checks, I have no.
We're not charging them, they're doing it themselves.
But also, back, the question is, what's the, what's more information?
All right, I'll say it again, if you, I do a background check on you, here you want to rent off me, I do a background check on you, and I go, huh, here's two warrants, here's two felony warrants. When I rent to you, and I go, what, I'm going to rent to him anyhow, and I rent you, and you want, come in another crime, or, or the police find out you're living there.
Many landlords are saying, or saying, oh, I wasn't aware, like, when we, when there are incidents, and now we had a couple in the last couple of months, with the new, uh, resolution of nuisance abatement, when there are incidents have occurred, we say, you know, this is what happened, blah, blah, blah. They're like, oh my gosh, I had no idea this person was living in my apartment, so, and he goes back to the nuisance.
Like, it's so awesome.
But going back to, back to the enforcement, if they do not turn this in, they don't get their rental permit, it's like, things were like, everything's like go across the sea throughout many years, everyone will agree with that. Now, Councilman Barnhart in the code office is trying to reel it back in, is saying, all right, this is the procedure, this is what you need, if you don't produce whatever, we'll say the background check, or the ID, or the whatever, you don't get the rental permit. That's where they want to go with this, this is why, they want to reel it back in and add something else, to make sure procedures be involved for the safety of everyone involved.
But that, that word, background check, what type of?
PA back, the PA background, PA background.
And you couldn't cause the thing.
But it's not meaningful. So what you're saying is that, so you're saying someone has two warrants, and you shouldn't rent to them.
All right, I didn't say you should, I didn't say you shouldn't, you can rent to them if you want.
Okay, that's what you're saying, so you can rent to them if you want, now when they go out here and play devil's advocate for a moment, and we have a schizophrenic living in a home with no warrants, no felonies, no whatever, stop taking their meds, have a mental health moment. And here comes the police, and now they're going to get points because that person had a mental health moment, and.
It, it, it goes back into what, into nuisance abatement, what, whatever, like, for example, things are going to happen, we're saying, we're not saying, nothing, nothing is bull, but in that situation, you know, it could be just a call, but if there is an incident, depending on how it falls into nuisance abatement, they may get points, they may not. But going back.
Well, I would hope they wouldn't, because of being a landlord.
I, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I have to look.
So they're, so I'm playing devil's advocate.
Yeah.
So I'm playing devil's advocate, because of mental.
I guess I don't, I don't know.
This is what I'm talking about, so what I would urge you to do, and be careful how you present it, um, what I'm hearing you say is, you can rent to them if you want to, we're going to punish you if something happens, and this is where.
We're going to punish something happens anyhow.
You're buying, so you're, you're spinning your wheels, and they're doing it twice, I have to read it faster, I, uh, twice in a year, Jim.
All right, go ahead, take a.
If somebody has warrant, permit, if you see they have a warrant, just, that's right off the map, all right, that's where it's wrong, that's where it's wrong. Second thing is, is that even if they have past criminal history, does not prevent them from doing anything, they have a constitutional right to.
Right, we're not saying.
I've been saying that.
But you cannot penalize someone.
We're not penalizing, we're not, we're not, no one's getting penalized, no one's.
That's what it sounds like.
But that's not what's happening, no one's getting penalized for anything, even if you do it or don't, or even right now, the nuisance abatement, with renter or property owner, you can still get points regardless if you're a property owner and or a renter.
I don't rent to anyone.
No, I'm just, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
I'm being the guy to say, you know, hey, you know, you still have a right.
And we're not, we're not taking away anyone's rights, we're not saying they cannot rent to anyone, we're not saying they get points for renting to them.
Wouldn't that be nice for you to know who's living in your property too?
I do.
I go.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jerry.
I'm trying to summarize, I think is the fundamental issue, I think you're using the wrong tools to accomplish the thing that you want. You're saying for, about knowing who is in your, living in your house, giving that information to the police, the chief has already said, providing the photo ID for the adults, the names and ages of the children. If you have a problem where a landlord rents to somebody, and they take their information, maybe they do a background check, maybe they don't, but other people then start living in that house, that, this what you're trying to do, doesn't solve that problem. You're using the wrong tool, and what you could rather do is enforce the ordinance that you have on the books, which is the requirements for the ID, for maintaining awareness of who's in that house, for taking action when too many people are living there. They can still get, you can still have it, so they get points against their rental permit, uh, based on not having turned in the IDs and the identities of everyone living in that house. It doesn't require a background check to, to accomplish what it is you're trying to accomplish, that's, that's what I'm saying.
If you were renting to somebody, would you want to know who's living in your property?
I know that, who's renting over my property, because I've collected their photo ID, uh, maybe I run the financial background, maybe from my own personal, I'm the landlord, from my own knowledge, I run a background check, but that's my choice, and I'm not turning that into you. I think it's government overreach, to ask for those, for that information from every tenant in the city.
I have, I have a question, just to put this out there, you're okay, so you have your tenants renting there, right, and you know who they are, now they bring somebody in, maybe from out of state somewhere, it's going to visit them. I have, I have a question, just put this out there, you, okay, so you have your tenants renting there, right, and you know who they are, now, they bring somebody in, maybe from out of state somewhere, it's going to visit them, how long are they allowed to stay there?
Ten days.
Ten days, if they're more than ten days, they've got to report it to the code that somebody else is living in their property.
Okay, I just wanted to know what, what, what that was on there, because if people come, that's from California, they're gonna stay for two weeks, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do that, no, I mean.
Do you have a part enough time with the administration, just the time that come involved in the administration of the rental warrant processes themselves? To add another piece on, which, again, is not the tool that you need to accomplish what you want to accomplish, you'd be better off investing in the code office and the personnel to do, and investing in streamlining the processes, automating the processes, there's a lot of other investment you could do that wouldn't require this.
Nate, you know, you wanted to say something, sorry.
So, I think, um, the first thing I want to say is that everybody up here strongly supports the police with the level of historic investment that's, that's in, in and out. So, that, that's my first thing, but the second thing is, I really wish we could have hammered out some of these details first, because when you look at things like this, um, it's not, it's not always about what could be wrong, it, it's about what, you know, you're gonna use it for, and, you know, the, I don't doubt the intent of this, but, you know, let's say, um, I come out of prison, and I want to go into a reentry program, and now all of a sudden I need a renter's permit, or I may need housing, I need, I may need clothing, I may need a job, and this is gonna be one more thing that, that members of that community, uh, you know, ex-prisoners, mental health people, uh, people who are coming out of homeless shelters, are going to be flagged, and, and whether or not, if they have criminal record. So, I think we really need to look at the intent of it, but it, it's also just flagging people who may be ready to be back in, and when you have historic levels of not only cooperation between the counties and the cities, but state and federal investments into mental health workers, reclassification of drugs, into prison systems, into mental health medicines, let's focus on how we can better help the transition of people into the community, rather than flagging people with tools that we already have. And the only other thing I would say, is, Jody, I'm glad that you brought it up, because the good conservative in me is thinking, wow, I really don't want the city telling me who I can rent to, because if it's this today, what is it tomorrow?
I mean, we're, we're not saying who a tenant cannot rent to.
But the intention is.
Who already have.
We don't have the background, so you're telling me, so you're telling me that the police are supposed to run the background on over twenty, over twelve hundred rental property?
They're only gonna run it if there's an issue there.
I'm, I'm just gonna say this, I am a landlord, I have properties, I have no problem turning it over, I have nothing to hide in my property. What's my problem?
What you imply is you don't want a background check, you know, something.
I never said that.
If you did, you said.
I just said, I, I have nothing to hide.
I run background check, I don't want nobody to tell me what to do.
As I said, I have nothing to hide with. I mean, if you don't want to turn it in, that's on you, that's on you, but like I said, when you start asking questions, and people say, well, it's just like, let me see what you got there, oh, no, why are you saying, oh, no, I have nothing to hide? I'm not saying you do either, I'm not saying. So, okay, we ask you a question, so we're, we're. Okay, we ask you this question, so if we're impeding on people's rights, what, 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 so you're telling me getting, I can see driver's I D for photo I D, why do we need social security?
Maybe do something that's not useful, chief already said, might have different information.
So, we have the background check, he's have, now he just has to run it now.
Chief, can you run a background check?
Okay, so you want to run on every single rental property, every single person?
If there's a situation.
If there's a situation, so instead of being proactive, we'll be reactive like we are right now, right? We'll wait until the problem happens, oh, they run the background check, oh my gosh, this person had all this, all that. I'm not saying that's wrong, like, he's.
I didn't hear it, listen.
So, you look in the head, he's telling, I'm applying things, I said, I have nothing to hide.
The thing, the thing of it is, is that when we're looking at this, and we're, we're saying this is the intent, and listen, I think we got, we're, I, we didn't vote, but I think we're getting to the same outcome for two totally different reasons. You weren't saying like, okay, I need this, too, I need this, I need this, but you know what, we really don't want to use it for this, but we're only gonna do it for this, but in case this gets flagged, then that's what we might use it for, that's what you're saying, I mean, come on.
Can I, can I just, one thing, just your side, and from listening to what Jody said, and what Lisa said, to the mayor, to Ister, to fifty eight, uh, Councilman Savage, it, it's, there is a lot of things, just, just in this little discussion that, that I have brought in, is, and one of the things was, how do we reach out, are we doing it the wrong way? You're there. Is it, do you add something to it with the mental health, do we put something on, is this a caution on these rural properties that we know there's somebody who's in this handicap? We can take a little bit from Nate, what you said, we can take from what Jody said, we can take from what Lisa said, and what Lisa said is, how do you enforce, you have all these things in place, but you don't have anybody to enforce it. How do you build your infrastructure to be able to implement what she's saying, what Nate's saying, what John's saying, what the mayor's saying, what Lisa's saying? You first have to build this infrastructure in the book, and you have to get people that are in there working, going out and making these checks.
So, how about this, we table it and come up with that system, after this heated discussion?
Well, we have to make sure, we have to make sure the letter of it means the spirit of it, and right now, it's just not, it's not enough.
Constitutional violations, you know.
Aren't you infringing on people's rights if they have a mental handicap?
Mental health breakdown, and now, now it's on a background check, um, I'm not sure that that's.
And then state, federal, state and county resources are gonna go into helping that person, so we're paying level triple.
Not necessarily, if maybe the chief down to the general, or being approved, without himself, if you're convinced, if it's valid.
All right, let's just table it, and we'll have a discussion in the next quarter.
I make a motion to table it.
I'll second it.
Before you go any further, what are other communities doing?
Savage, yes, Ister, Brochus, yes. All right, Councilman Barnhart, uh, resolutions for nuisance.
I make a motion for resolution twenty twenty four by twenty nine thirty to add, or add four fifty two zero seven, four sixty two Catoisa, nine twenty five Reagan, to the, uh, public nuisance list.
Second. Martina, Ister, Savage, yes, Brochus, yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman Barnhart, update the nuisance list.
I make a motion to add the public nuisance list.
Second. Martina.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ister. Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
All right, Councilman Martina.
In your packets, there are three different change orders for Sussman Avenue, I make, I make a motion to accept those three, if you have any questions, please let me know, but it's ordered three, four, and five.
Second. Ister. Savage.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
On the back of your sheet is those all of twenty twenty four, then on our folders, I'm just taking a motion to accept all of them through the end of the year.
Savage.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Barnhart. Martina.
Yes.
Ister. All right, uh, moving on, uh, hiring a part-time police officer, Tyler Hertz, there, uh, the chief and I was talking about trying to get more part-time help on, uh, this is within our budget restraint, the chief is very close, close to looking at that. Uh, chief, do you want to add anything on this part-time hiring?
Uh, Mr. Hertz, you're a senior veteran, um, comes from, actually, the Mount Carmel township, uh, was in Mount Carmel, Mount Carmel township, um, just basically, he lives in the convert area, looking for a restart. By hiring, by hiring this part-time officer, I hope, my hopes are for the people that I have right now, we have, they look at payroll and things like that, we've been using substitute in the part-time, which is what we need to do. Uh, being in the manpower issue that we're at right now, and that's everywhere, um, Tyler will be able to suit a better need with me, instead of having a full timer that we have to use to supplement it, it's the same, these part timers, maybe we use support on, or, or need, and Tyler will fit in.
Questions, anyone?
How often have, have any of the new part timers been working?
Um, right now, there's more, I, usually, I would say, they're going anywhere between two, two to three shifts, um, a month, so, but, they, they fall below three, um, um, only because.
So, you're speaking about a certain level?
Yes, they, I want to work in three shifts a month, you know, three shifts a month, a month.
And are we having any issues with everything that's going on, having, not having manpower, not being able to extend because of their other obligations?
No, um, actually, with the, um, incident we had on Front Street, it was anywhere in the three point.
So, we have to, we have everything.
Yeah, they, they, well, they both, we have, anyhow, uh, this is what I'm just using Front Street, throw a part-time in the door. Because that's something we can't use task force for, it wasn't a task force initiative for event, it was all fireworks, and then it hit, it, it, um, so, yeah, well, we use part timers, we use them, but my thing is, is they're not gonna work, they're just, they're, they're on the books, they're gonna be able to do this task force, that's not important.
Any other questions? All right, I'll make the motion to hire a part-time police officer, Tyler Hertz, for drive a second, at twenty-eight dollars now, at our rate.
I'll second.
Ister. Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Brochus. Yes, uh, so the C D C O G, that scope, that was what Jamie did earlier, that's not required vote, it just had to be done at a public meeting, which she has done. Uh, moving on to city hall blueprints, um, there are hard copy of blueprints here, and also, there were email and digital copy, copy, wow, copy to everyone, uh, Councilman Ister and I met with, um, well, I guess it's a new company now, no longer, I forget what the new name is. Yeah, so, to go over what the council wanted with, uh, what, what we all discussed here, the final, uh, vision was, like I said, in the blueprints. Uh, now, at this point, like I said, we have the blueprints down, which we already voted upon, now we're just voting on, all right, this is what we want, to go out for bid, which we already approved the funds for, we just have to make it in a vote to do so. I mean, does anyone have questions on what we already discussed in final, not finalized, but already discussed and have on paper?
Only may have to do it, because remember, there are phases.
Correct.
You know what the phases are about.
So, as Councilman Ister, so phase one was to do the main hallway with the lobby areas for each of the offices. Phase two would be also do the code office, then phase three would be the right side of the hallway with the treasurer's office, conference room, and the mayor's office as well. Included in phase one, that's what we, what we wanted to do, while ripping the walls apart, was to redo the wiring in the building, as well as doing the, the rear entrance in this building, the rear entrance of the building as well, we're putting an awning to help prolong the life of the door that would be there from the weather. So, that was also added to phase one scope of things that we'll call it.
First floor.
First floor, correct, yes, I mean, if you want to do the second floor, I should stick with the first floor. I mean, does anybody of council have any questions on?
The, the electrical, you know, that one wall in the code offices?
Yes.
You came plenty with that.
So, that's, that's being moved.
It's coming out.
That's gonna be coming out.
The first floor, it's totally rewired.
Yes.
That wall, family room is coming out.
Yeah.
That's what you said.
Yeah, you can have a window.
I got a window there now, but.
Exactly, all right, any other questions about this? Any questions? All right, I made the motion to accept the city hall blueprints, do I have a second? Savage.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister. Yes, uh, Councilman Savage.
So, I would like to make a motion, and we've passed resolutions number two zero two four dash zero two six, two zero two four dash zero two seven, and two zero two four dash zero two eight, um, all of which address the minimum municipal obligations that the city needs to make.
Second. Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Brochus.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilman Savage, keep going.
So, for this one, um, may I jump on the discussion bandwagon here?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think, um, so last week, for information, the mayor and myself, Derek, were asked to, I mean, with, uh, the U S senators offices, uh, both Casey and Federman staff were there, um, based on information that we received there, I think that tonight, I want to make a motion that, um, to stop the consideration of sale of some municipal authority in its entirety, um, that, that's, that's my motion, is to stop the, stop the consideration of sale of the authority. Um, I think that for everybody in the room, I mean, there's been questions, there's been panic, there's been water rates, there's been various pieces that have been left out, um, and I think that we really need to sit back and consider selling a public, public utility to private sellers, but also, uh, if you step back and look at, at twenty twenty onward, we've had historic levels of federal funding in the form of ARBA, in the form of CHIPS Act, in the form of Infrastructure Acts. We have historic levels of funding that are coming down to public entities now to do this infrastructure, these are, these are once in every fifty to a hundred year projects, if that, once in a generation, I think is right. So, my motion is to stop consideration of the sale of the municipal authority.
How, how can you consider stopping, okay, first of all, there's not even a sale on the table, it's just conversations, and we don't even know all the facts from anyone yet, based on one, one, now, obviously, one in the McDonald's, they're right, we're, one group of people telling you something. Like, I sat in the same meeting, and they said, funding would be stopped because of us having conversations. Now, I called both the entities that were interested, one was P A Water, one was Agua P A, and I'm like, has this, have you ever had a situation that occurred like this? And they said, they have never heard of a situation where people were threatening to stop funding because you're having a conversation, and they said they were checking with their attorneys, their government affairs, to see if that was even legal, the one even said it was borderline extortion, that they're threatening to hold money because you're just having a conversation. Like, I'm not saying we're even committing to a sale or anything like that, but, but not to get all the facts on the table to hear, to make a sound decision, to say, we're just gonna vote to stop it, how can you make a decision, we don't even have all the facts on the table, adhering what they could have to offer, or not offer, and things like that. And going back to rate increases, it's not up to any one individual entity to raise the rates, they have to go to the proper channels to do so, it's just like we talk about rates, but the authority raised rates last year, no one complained about that, they just, they just put a fee on, right? But, you know, but they still did it anyway, they still did it anyway, they just put a fee on for credit cards now at the transfer station again, so we're talking about fees, but.
Josh, listen, don't, the only reason, the only reason why is because people don't open their mouth.
Well, I'm not.
A lot of people complained about it because it wasn't necessary, the same way, and you know this from years ago, they were not allowed to charge for going for the transfer station for recyclables, and what did I go through, how many times did they go through, even the city solicitor, they were charged to, to go in there, they put a gate up there now, so that you have to pay to get in, because that was the loophole to get around it, when it, when there's no charge for recycling. And they went through, even the district attorney's office, when there were, say, hey, you can't do it.
But you're missing the point there, you have a project on Sussman Avenue, we're in phase one.
Not disregarding any of that.
Phase two is roughly seven million, round numbers, we'd be losing that funding.
But, but see, like, you didn't even take the time to hear, because, yeah, those different entities said they applied for grant money, too, from the federal government to do projects such as these, like, we're not even hearing conversations and asking those questions, so.
Well, I think, I, I.
Their community, my kids, I have to report to you, Josh, this is, I'm saying, but I'm putting my, of course, of the municipal authority and the infrastructure, that's there, under Act twelve, that's what you gotta do, before you do anything for the sale, if you hooked it, Act twelve, if you read Act twelve, it tells you in there, process of approval, and we've not done it.
I'm not saying.
So, the law there is saying that we need to build a profit, thirty-five million dollars, and that profit, was it, was it, or was it not a new?
I'm not saying it was not.
Okay, did you say it, or didn't say it?
I, I, I'm saying I said, I'm not lying, you said I didn't.
So, put that number out there, that's not a good number, that's not a good number.
Well, let's, let's get it, let's get, let's get it evaluated and see how close I was. Let's get it evaluated and see.
That's a decision that has to be made, but there's a lot more involved than this, and by saying what you've said, is you've created a, a, a lot of panic among a lot of people.
Where was the panic, nothing is set in stone, like, we're just having a conversation, and people's panic, I can see if we're gonna sign on the dotted line, I can understand the panic, but now, if we just have a conversation, we can't even have conversations anymore?
Why is that, why is that, we should do it in the first place?
I mean, I, what's, what is, what is the benefit from the city of St. Mary's promoting?
Well, it's obvious.
What, what, what?
It's an asset, it's an asset.
Okay, but what is the benefit?
Well, to the people.
And so, and so will anyone else.
It's not a profit, a poor profit, anybody who buys that for thirty-five million is going to want to make money, which means raising our rates.
But once again, they, there's a, there's a bigger entity that you just can't raise the rates, back to my, like, right, right? Back to my, like, right, don't they have to go through the P U C rates? No, they're far, yes or no?
No.
So they don't have to go through the, what is the P C or the P U C, don't they have to go through that to improve the rates?
I don't think just one more. Nothing just one. It's the one that you thought it was not, it's not really one of the rest.
Here's, here's the question.
Again.
There's sort of last year. What I'm going to say to you is this, you find up there. How the authority is going to act because you have the authority. It's your job to put the people on the authority board in order to do the job that you do. Going out and selling it is not going to make life better for the citizens of the city of Sundbury. What's going to make life better is if you guys want to play, making sure that you have the people on the authority board that's going to act in the benefit of the city of Sundbury. They are part of the city of Sundbury, it's an asset, like Mr. Ister said, for the city of Sundbury. Going in there and selling it, when you prioritize something, it's a for-profit now. They need to make money for their shareholder or whoever.
So the authority doesn't make money?
And trades.
It makes money in order to put back into the infrastructure.
So what do you, so you don't think these other entities are putting money back in for the infrastructure when we do our projects?
After the entities that have it and the problems they already have.
I think we should ask some of the other communities who solve it.
Use it like.
Because everything on the news is so positive and some flowers.
But no, it's, it's not, but. Do your research.
I did do my research and I spoke with these companies.
Hey, I mean, thank, my, thank, if I could just interject for one second, you mentioned Act twelve. Act twelve, Doc, just so you know, was actually passed, yes, to allow distressed municipal authorities to be sold. They couldn't maintain the public good, they couldn't provide services or, or, or maintain their upgrades. That's what the intention of Act twelve was. We've been in operation for seventy-five years where, if our operation were viable, there's no, there's no public good to sell a non-for-profit organization like ourselves to for-profit company just for financial. Derek?
And the authority is very solid right now, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Well, and what I was going to say is, until you go through the public, you know, if, if that's what council wants to. Any motion?
I have two other points, so the, the other thing is when, I, I want to be very clear with everybody in the room, I did not, I don't think we were threatened, that funding was threatened. I think what was saying, what was being said is, um, you know, when you're, when you're looking at federal money that's coming in or state money or county money or any money that's going into a public project to then be kicked over to a private entity, you're, you're basically subsidizing privatized business with government dollars. And the senator's office didn't encourage or discourage, uh, uh, any evaluation or anything, they just said, hey, basically, this money that you've asked for, for these projects for your public authority can now no longer go to this if it's going to be up for sale, which I think is pretty reasonable with public dollars. But the other thing is we're not looking at the increased cost of, you know, what's the stormwater and flood management part of this going to look like too? Because then we're going to have to absorb, I'd say probably at least five hundred to a million dollars loosely, the authority guys can tell me, in city budget to, to manage those things as well. So we're looking at all kinds of increased costs, so this, this, the shiny price tag is great, but it, it seems like we are already ten million down at least to start.
But we didn't even have any of these questions answered.
Well, even in the best case scenario.
But based, based off, based off of thirty-five million dollars at two percent, that's seven hundred thousand dollars of interest that we would have to live on. So that, and to your point, Councilman Savage, that would not be enough to cover the maintenance of the flood mitigation and the stormwater port that would have to come to us because it would be separated. And to, to talk about the grant side of things, what they were talking about is appropriations, every grant in federal, state, foundation, all of them have guidelines. Um, part of appropriation guidelines is not having public, uh, excuse me, private, uh, entities, uh, be the holders and be allotted those appropriation dollars. That's what they were referring to, so I agree with Councilman Savage, it had nothing to do with threats of the explosion.
There, there, there's still a concern based on how far that we've gotten with one particular project, which is flood control. We maintain a very good flood control system.
That wouldn't be part of the sale.
Pardon me?
That probably would not be part of the sale.
No, but the point is right now we've applied for about four million dollars thing. And grants to fix our toll drain system.
But they're not staying with the city, so that probably would not be effective.
No, no, they, would, would be affected, because they're applicants, so if we, the way it was described is, um.
At, at some point?
None, even.
If they were going through with what we were.
But like I said, once again, we don't even have all the information to know.
Oh, yeah, he, he has to get time to confirm. I'm talking about application period.
For that.
But like I said, we're only hearing one side of information, one, one side. Like I said, if we have all the information, I could understand making a sound decision, saying yes or no, but we don't even have all the information, we're hearing one side. And at that point, if you hear both sides and you're like, it's not the best, then it's not the best. But to say we're not even going to hear information, I don't think that's a wise decision to make.
Well, it probably shouldn't have been, but you're talking about it, it's, you have those sides.
Well, here's the thing, and everyone will say this, and I've, and I said this, and I'll say it right here in public. If we have meetings behind the scene, that's where the information would die, right there, everybody knows that.
I'm not trying to complain, it's a way.
No, I'm saying like.
The paper said it.
First of all, it's a, it's a.
The paper said it was not part of.
This is part of the law, you have to discuss this in public.
Oh, I, 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 exactly, so how can we, how did, like I said, just conversation.
Did some, did something happen that we even went, I know it has been discussed, conversations and I have no opinions on why, but I need to know, is there a specific reason why the slot process came into play for the sale?
You mean you personally?
Just, yes.
In general?
Just for the, yes, in general.
Because my, my own personal opinion, I'm not saying it's right or wrong or endeavor, but my own opinion, other than the municipal authority being an asset, there's no benefit from the city owning it and I see on the back end of it, looking down the road on a sale price of whatever it may be, how that could financially stabilize the city for the rest of the time and get the money that we need to do our projects as a street projects, parks and rec projects, hire employees, have matching grant money which we don't have. That's what I saw. I'm not saying that's the right vision or anything like that, but it not to.
It's a runabout tax.
What?
It's a runabout way for a tax. Instead of taxing the city for.
They said that you never took into consideration rate pay.
Wait, where, what do you mean the rate pay? Like, we didn't even have any conversations, you act like I'm ready to sign the papers right here.
That's what the satellite in the paper.
Well, you sell it, you sell it, that's where everyone.
My coaching, it's funny, right?
Yeah, and then my, my water breaks go up, you've got a problem with the infrastructure, private and your infrastructure is the bottom line.
But we don't even know those things, like, that's the thing with making a decision.
We do from past.
What have we, what have we sold here in the city?
It doesn't mean past here, what other places have done and what's.
Well, other places do other things that we don't do here, that somehow we can't do it here.
We don't live in la la land, we live in, we live in, we live in.
Reality, I know, I could, I could make a lot of different examples where other municipal authorities are doing things that didn't exist.
And when that one people been.
Like, goes back to the people up here managing the money.
Yeah, so people are very. What happened to money when the last, we're all flooded.
Oh, I, I understand that.
We're, we're, we're under, that's going to be.
So you need to have the majority vote to put people on it, you know that.
As one, as one member of this, of this board, I mean, I would much rather members of our community who are appointed to a local board rather than a company that's off in anywhere. Um, and the other thing is, you know, if, if we're going to, if we do, let's just say in a, in a theoretical move, we do go ahead with this, then we're going to have to look at a council as expanding grant writing opportunities, uh, grant management. We're going to have to look at the intricacies of public money, and that's if we get awarded the grant after we, uh, if we vote to do it. But the other thing is, is it puts us in a serious ethics issue because we're, we're going to, we can't sit back as a council and say, well, you know, we're made aware of this issue, uh, with federal appropriations dollars. Well, we're going to do this anyway, hope for the money and then just give it over to a private company. I mean, that's, that's what's us in a hairy situation as, as boards of public money.
Personally, it needs to be done in proper management. The person you've got to do is, if you really want to do something like this, is follow what you're prescribed.
But you're making.
That's your vote.
But you're making a decision not even.
You have a vote. Nope, what I'm saying is.
But we don't even.
To do it in the right way, then do it in the right way. If you, if, follow what the law says, you can follow the act.
I guess.
If you got the votes to do it, do it.
I made it. Hold on, Nate, Nate made a motion.
He made the motion, I just.
He made it like twenty minutes ago.
Well, like I said, we didn't have a disc, I, we wanted to have a discussion about it, but I guess we're voting anyway.
Well, can I give you an opinion first? Have a vote, I, you can have a vote, I just want to give you an opinion. Thank you. My opinion is, I don't think you can say we won't have further discussions. I think what you can say, you can't, you can't tell anybody what they cannot discuss. But what you can do is say we will or will not move forward with an evaluation. An evaluation is necessary to do anything further with this subject. So while I'm not sure you can censor someone or sanction them that they can't talk about something, I know for a fact you can say we are either going to have an evaluation or we're not going to have an evaluation.
At this time or ever?
You can say ever because we don't know. The council can change.
Joel, so on that point, could, uh, council decide to create a, a subcommittee that would take it out of council's hands of an individual to do an evaluation at some other time? Like, if council says we want to look into this or whatever, it's not council that does it, it's a separate authority. Or a committee, not a.
Can we, can we, can we before committees now?
So it's not just council members looking at it, it's separate, I don't think I see.
I mean, I think, like, Joel has said, if people were placed in, we'd probably want to change the motion to do exactly what you said.
So I think we send, I think we send an amendment.
Hold on, one question on Joel's, on that motion. So does that mean someone can't come here and speak then or not? What does that mean then? That mean no conversations can take place in public here, people will ask questions?
If, no. What it means is this, I think in order to have somebody come and speak on this subject, you may have to have a, a consensus.
So we need to have a council vote to have someone come, come speak to saying this is what they can offer?
If you're going to be accepting.
Not accepting, just, 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 I mean, information. Like I said, it's not, I'm just saying, here, here's information, you can ask questions back and forth, they get your question, they answer.
You can always have an informational.
Like a work session, no votes, just a work session.
You can absolutely do that, but the end result is, if there's not going to be any evaluation, then.
Yeah, then, then some point, but you know, at least at that point, people will say that, hey, everyone can ask their questions, everyone have their information.
Right.
And it could be a work session at one, where I can not have council.
Well, I mean, if you don't want to show up, then you can't say you didn't know the information, but I know.
But, but again.
That could happen.
But again, the license.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm just asking, so if, if.
That's the beginning point of this, so.
Yeah.
It would not be the benefit of having to have so many people there to talk until council makes a decision in the future whether they're going to do the evaluation or not.
But what, what, so you're saying someone can't come in and talk until we get an evaluation done, but clearly council.
Maybe because you can't do anything, you got to.
Or just have a work session to say what they can offer and what they, because everyone, they're only hearing one, I understand what you're saying, Spack.
That's a part of the bidding process.
But we're not even, we're not even at that point, I just want information, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, this is what we're saying. This is the point of what we're saying. What we're saying is, first step in the whole process has to be evaluation. How did that, then you go out and you start soliciting what you want to do, not try, the motion, Joel.
I just want to ask Joel, Joel, if there's a, if, if there's a work session scheduled, can someone come and speak about the work session and people can ask questions?
Any, any one of you can schedule a work session and have, basically whoever you want to hear is going to start discriminatory here against the law.
Okay.
So yes, the, as far as, yes, that's the answer.
Okay, go ahead, Nate.
So my motion is not to consider an evaluation to sell the suburban municipal authority.
You can second. Rochus.
No.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Savage.
Yes.
Councilman Savage, approval of vouchers and invoices.
I make a motion that we approve the stretch of vouchers for the government in the amount of one hundred thousand sixty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Private grants in the amount of forty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty cents and payroll in the amount of ninety-one thousand three hundred forty-three dollars.
Back to them. Rochus.
Yes.
Barnhart.
Yes.
Martina.
Yes.
Ister.
Savage.
Yes.
All right, uh, discussions, uh, Riverwalk, Councilman Barnhart and I were out a couple weeks ago about trying to expand, not only on river, uh, riverfront walkway and lines and all that stuff, but also around the city. Uh, I know it's, it's Jeff Lewis here.
Jeff Lewis is here.
I know we talked about going, you know, kind of like avoiding sport hats and also lock pavement and putting the walk path on top of the dike and also around the city. I know, uh, Councilman Barnhart and I are very, like I said, we're into that thing, want to see, I know there was a study done, Texas Charers, a couple of years ago about the walking path in Sundbury. So where do we at on that, what do we need to do to move forward to get whatever we need to do to keep the ball rolling? We've been working on it a couple of years.
And that's Jeff, is that, that, how does structure sound, uh, or, you know, to put a wall on top of it?
Oh, again, there's, all federal projects, federal projects, we are. Makes better maintenance for us, makes better access during higher watering events, it actually keeps people out there so they don't have to monitor too, so they don't have such unauthorized activity on their motorcycles.
Thank you.
It's the opposite.
So the, uh, T A side aside, grant that we received is technically part of it because the, the point of the whole thing is to create interconnectability. Um, so the point of that is to have the system go to the riverfront and the riverfront, that's what will be one day, reach over two, three stages park and then beyond where it goes. So, um, it, it'd be worked on in phases, I would call it, but it's just the continuation right now is on, uh, Park Street side and the Tri-Side specifically hasn't been worked on, but we have, and I have had conversations about that.
So how far, for the T A side, how far would that get us on front?
So right now it's only getting us to about a pack or so.
All right, is there any plans to apply for any other grants other than the T A side to continue the work, not that work is a great word, the path up Front Street and around the dike?
So, uh, in conjunction with C D cog, we actually put in for the full amount of an estimate of everything. Um, it's honestly, it's kind of a shot in the dark, um, see what happens, uh, but we did put in for all of that and we'll kind of see what happens. There was no, there was no match, no notting, any decisions. Hey, we're asking for basically allocation, we're looking for projects and just put it in.
What was the dollar amount for the tour?
Three, you know. Uh, I would have to look, it was a high number, we were the biggest.
The traffic center, we started the cheer and hacker, it's going to be radio and then next phase will be, that section will probably, so. A lot of times it won't fund, it's three phases out.
Okay, what about the dike, and that's not a part of the Front Street phase, what about that worship?
That's another funding source.
Well, I mean, it, it could be the same funding source, it's just.
I mean, is there only one, one main source for these types of recreational projects or there's other, are there other ones out there?
Uh, it depends on what you're doing, but the T A side side can do the walkway, but they won't do, uh, they won't do engineering. So the engineering for the non-norid trail to, to D C N R, that's what we can go for, for that, we did go for engineering. D C N R and fifty-fifty match and the, there's an unofficial cap, I'll call it, at, but I can see it's two hundred fifty thousand. Um, T A side aside, uh, was, I forget what their match with, or, or, um, their amount was, I think it was up one, two, five, I think. Um, and we got one point three, I would have to double check.
So that one point three gives off your Packers street, that's what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
But to your point, you can use those and interchange, interchange them off, but the T A side side makes that more sense than the D C N R grant for that because it would just get as far that it could get more money.
Do D C N Rs move match?
No, no, T A side, T A side side. The D C N R notoriously, and I'm going to do generalities, uh, is usually to the match, so if you get two fifty, you can go.
Well, like I said, at least it's, at least some of the projects can do work, so they keep looking for grant money to get the whole thing completed hopefully before we all are dead. Listen, the rate that we're getting money, it would give me a lot of money if I ever get the law.
I know, we're getting a lot of money.
Well, we got, well, we, not four blocks, we've run twenty-three million, we're running four million dollars.
Well, you're going to have to blame inflation for that.
Again, you have time and laws can tip. All right, any questions on that one? All right, uh, U T V's here, so I know Councilman Barnhart, we're out in his U T V and we almost went first, swim in the river due to the condition of the U T V. And I know the police department U T V has seen better days and I know Parks Direct is also in the same boat, I know what Steve's are, so. I know Steve was going to put his on, uh, Minnesota bid, but I just want to know if council would be all right if I can just speak with the police and go out and shop for a better U T V for the police department.
We were shocked and shocked for us.
Okay.
Don't shop for Parks Direct.
So we're selling the U T Vs? So, we're selling the UTVs that we had?
Well, I wouldn't say selling, we'll have to see, you know, what trade-in value is worth, if you're going to trade them in somewhere.
It's called. Backfinding.
Well, I'm just saying, whatever the best option is, that's, that's what I mean, like, I'm not going to say we're going to trade, sell, whatever, whatever the best option is. But, you know, I want to get the ball rolling, at least when the police aspect and the code, I guess Parks and Rec is okay, I think we talked to, so.
Does everyone have money and budgets, and is there a gap?
No, I didn't say that, I, I just figured, you know, three out of four, or no, but I think.
My, my worry is UTVs are expensive, and from my understanding, the ones that we got, weren't necessarily top line at all. Um, so, so, I'm assuming from what we're going to sell them for to get a new ones, there's going to have to be a gap that needs filled.
I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, GPW has three UTVs, so maybe they don't give three.
So is there any idea where that, you know.
Well, we, we have to see what they're worth, what they sell for, what, you know, whatever each department needs, and see if there's a gap. Because it's like, we got them at the cost of our price, you don't know what you're going to get, we don't know what they're worth. As I said, let's see what they're worth and go from there. Exactly.
I think best for you then, is we put ours up for sale, see where it goes. I have council assurance that all of them want gap money, if you don't go to the other one, then you guys can figure it out, and that's yours, right?
Well, hey, as long as your gap money comes out of your department, I don't care where it comes from. Alright, does anyone have issues with that? Alright, moving on, obviously the next discussion topic, we don't talk about that again. Uh, dump tank, so, Jim, you would know, because you were here longer than anybody, that the dump tank has seen better days. It is, what, twenty-plus years old? Or pushing it? So basically, it's, it's time for a new one, I see the council will be opposed to looking at different grant monies to possibly get a new modern one that, you know, isn't being held together with, you know, duct tape and WD-40 and that type of stuff.
Why is looking like some tech or somebody at school to help build that?
I, I mean, we can, like I said, we have, we have to start looking, yes, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm up for any option that allows us to get a new modern one, so it's not being held together with, you know, yeah. Exactly, so is anyone opposed to looking for the dumb tanks, have some new modern ones, you know, these new modern ones, that's a waiver, that people have to sign, so, when they use them. Yeah, yeah, it's, whatever option that we will get a new one, that is in better condition. Well, like I said, there's other grants. Anyone, is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Alright. Jim, boat light launch lights, where are we at? Well, I understand that, I just want to know if there's any update, I mean, it has, okay, what's the update? I understand, I want to be up there like this. Not, not, not also feed into the moonlights that are on Front Street as well. But they can dump it into here also? I know, but, you know, time is something, we don't. We can get those fixed too. No, they don't, they don't work. No, just don't want the ones that are wrapped on the riverside. The ones that are all smashed out for like ten years. Alright, so, Jim said in a year, the boat light, boat launch lights and the moonlights, hopefully, the next year coming, but hopefully soon. Alright, so, uh, cyber liability, so last week when we met with InnoTech, and everyone was invited to, the company that came down was based out of Hazelton, they have an office in Bloomsburg. They, they're interested in our IT services, but they weren't happy with our IT services. The one thing that they brought to our attention, which we do not have, is cyber liability insurance, which we should have had over twenty years ago. So, I don't know if council wants to possibly reach out to whoever provides that type of insurance, but, that's so, is something, for example, if a firewall, something goes through a firewall and something, information is leaked, that we are covered liability wise with insurance. Is the council okay when, we'll see, Jack, listen, yeah, they look for liability insurance, cyber liability insurance. Alright. So that was. I have no idea what's, if it's in there or not, is this something that they asked if we've had it, and I said, I honestly don't think we do, because when. Exactly, and it's one of those things, I don't know if, in for that, I, I remember them not speaking about it, so I don't know if we have it or not.
About you, Joel, it's, it's in, in for that contract, that we're offering for that?
Yes.
By them?
Okay.
But that's not an insurance. Um, so, we could, I'm sure, benefit from cyber liability insurance going on, whatever they're getting from your provider, the, yes, so that's.
Alright, and then based on the technology stuff, they also recommend that we get a network assessment, meaning, what are we going to need for the next software coming out, or our computers across the board for the city, I know we spoke about this since January, but it's getting to that point, I know at the PD, when the next upgrade comes out, their software is not going to link, their computers are not going to work with the new current software. And we need to get, we should, we should get a network assessment done, saying, for example, in the Treasury Department, what softwares do you need going forward? Down DPW, code, Parks and Rec, police, because we don't want to get to that point where it says, man, this is not working, we need it to work, we don't want to get to that point, you want to be ahead of the ball game. So, you think everyone, all departments can see what they need, so whether it's, we stick with in for that, or go with this new internet company that reached out, or whoever it may be, but at least we know what our needs are for that. Everyone okay with doing that, because before we get, when the new Windows eleven comes out, and what software comes out, before we're like, we need a computer now, we have nothing working. Well, we have that, the, uh. Derek, where did you see from here from? The fiber outlet.
Well, I can't find the, where, we, we actually go to.
No, it's not, it's, you have to ask Kevin on that.
So, are we talking about the annual?
The annual, the annual, so.
So that, that annual, all that can, it's, it's calculated in our budget, because there's revenue coming in for it already, which is part of our, our expenditure.
Expenditures.
So, there's nothing that is, is not set aside specifically for that.
So, not Kevin then?
So.
Yeah, it's, it's going from one hand to the other to balance the budget. But, I said, I would meet with Kevin and ask Kevin.
What about the, the?
Well, I mean, the, the back money, we set, we set aside for city hall upgrades, but, the other money coming in, and you talk to Kevin, that's set aside for IT, whatever, IT upgrades, IT, whatever, so like I said, I, I think Kevin would. Well, I don't know, I don't think, I was getting this to Kevin. Look, I'm just saying. This guy, not fine. Alright, so, what is, any other discussion comments that we have in here tonight? Alright, announcements, accepting letters of interest, woman open position on the Harv must be licensed contract. Accepting letters of interest, seven spots to the nuisance abatement. Uh, River Festival at the Royal Village Park is taking place from August sixteenth and seventeenth. Darts and Curiosity Fest at Shore Valley will be on September fourteenth. Tire and metal recycling event at the James R. Icey Community Center on September fourteen, from nine AM to twelve PM, no TVs or dishwashers. Lake Augusta's Wine and Brew Fest at Royal Village Park on September twentieth. Next council meeting will be held August sixth, at six fifteen. And, right now, is there any public comment, not this time? Yeah, cool.
Hey guys, listen, if there's no public comment, I'll be really quick, up here, I have these little boxes. If there's any businesses that want to help, there's a sixth grader, Shickamue School District, and his name's on there, I'm not going to say it out loud, but he has, uh, he's pretty sick. Looking to help him out, if anybody wants to take one, or make more, we have him down the basement, you don't have to. Uh, dinner thing, we're doing the tires and the metal recycling next month. The money for the tire, we're going to give to the skateboard, uh, skateboard guys, the, the starter offer going for the skateboard. And the money for the metal recycling, the donation, we're going to scrap the stuff, the stuff we bring, we're going to take that, and we're going to put that into, uh, this little fellow's, uh, medical, medical, uh, bills. Little kid, sixth grader, fix it, if you guys want, call me, I'll make the boxes up, and I'll give them to you, okay? Alright, thanks.
Alright, any other public comment? Go ahead, please say your name, so.
Oh, we're on.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, give your advice coming to council meetings. When Chris was on, uh, for the streets, they were going to do the street behind me, okay, put McCarthy, it's a block long back there, he, he wrote down, he said it was bad. And of course, he's no longer here, nothing ever happened, I lived there thirty years, nobody ever really touched that street, they made it deeper for him, the pile of snow on, and, and, you know, it's, it's a mess down there, you know. And, I just wondered, when are we going to get to it?
It's under consideration for this year. Okay, it is. Almost, maybe on next.
But, like, when they asked, it's eight years ago.
I understand, I wasn't hearing what you were saying. I only have so much money.
Francis, what's your housing, like, behind your house?
There's, there's, listen, if somebody would like to give me an old spin suitcase of money, I'll save the whole damn city, I don't got no money. Listen, I.
Alright, uh, any other public comment, can we say, James? I guess it depends on, if you're, the work that they're doing, if it requires a permit, not all work requires a permit, so if it's permit work, it should be displayed in some type of window on their property.
Okay, well, they're doing their, it's in a, it's. Why do you get the right one? And, which then, um, that this home is not a, a little bit final. However, they are changing, they're putting outside the workers and the bad, so this property, um, not trying to fight the shoes, but what, this is one of the things that helps that city, is that one person can do it this way, and the other person has to do it that way, and someone gets the plan, the plans, and, and a public easement, and, so I'm asking, because they're doing work outside and inside the municipal permits here, and also the Harv. Exact words were unknown, was, I was told by Code that I did need to go to Harv because I'm doing it myself. So, my porch needs fixed, so guess what, Victoria Rosenkrantz is going to do her own job, and I'm not going to go to Harv. And that's not necessarily true, because we did work ourselves too on our sidewalk, and we needed permits.
Yeah, they, they, I'll, I'll, you can tell me later, because.
So, that's just my concern here with Code, that we're hearing tonight, that process is need to be approved, and we've lost a lot of Code. Lost a lot of Code employees, and I'm just concerned about that, and now I'm hearing NCIF or NICU, I don't know if that's a show, anyway. And I don't have time to watch TV, so I don't know, but, um, so, I'm just hearing that, so, I think, um, you know, we're supposed to be hiring that full-timer, we've got all these people, now we're down to, um, one point two five, I don't know, someone writing grants, I just, I've been seeing a lot of things in the city, um, you know, we, we need, you know, this, this whole discussion on the background, that's secondary to the public.
Are you coming to the thing somewhere immediately?
Because she, you know, she may have stuff, or she has, you know, the citizens are doing things, like, well, that's not.
I like this.
And Mr. Brown, I hear, gets sent to that ground, and then Code told her she was allowed to plant flowers, on a public easement, is screaming children, sending all the worms, sitting in her yard with guns, leaving a lay on the table, I have pictures, I did a video with her, so I had a conversation, and I'll tell you what, I did that, you know why? Because for once, this city, the citizens in this city rallied behind a citizen and said, we are not going to tolerate that in our city. So I'm hoping, and I think there was a discussion and a meeting, and I'm going to keep urging you, something is done with her because she's going to hurt somebody. Okay, she's going to hurt somebody. It's, it's horrible, she has been attacking citizens, she doesn't care what she said about me, I got that, and I don't care about Mr. Brown, when his grandson stands there in front of her, his grandson in front of her because she screamed at him, okay? She's a liability to our city, please, we need to figure it out. She didn't buy that property with her own money, it belongs to Mr. McSweeney, Californian, I have a side nurse in California, I don't have a lawyer yet. Because I want she folks to deal with that, okay, but I'm reporting you, please, I don't care, but she has nothing about social media, but when, she's threatening to shoot someone's dog, and having guns, and people at the eaters, elderly people calling me and saying, Victoria, I'm afraid you go outside and smoke cigarettes, because now they can't smoke in apartments, they have to go out and walk off their pavement. And then she's shining lights and mowing her grass at eleven o'clock at night with a flashlight on.
So, she doesn't own the property, should that fall back on a landlord deal?
Well, I, I know, I'm just giving the information, but anyway, I want to, I want to finish with my three minutes stuff, and I'm hot and sweating, and I'm all dying in here. But, so why, I want to say thank you tonight, because we're having, we had open discussions when we come to the city. And we're not supposed to be met by ordinance, right, but thank you for that, because it's important to the city. So thank you to the Salisbury Fire Department, thank you for all your work that you're doing, along with consolidation, and to our police department, because they're doing amazing work, and that's all I have to say.
Real quick, Vicki, on the issue with Mr. Brown and the neighbor, we did have a meeting, and I can't go into details, but the district attorney is involved, and I personally met, so, I can tell you.
How much longer do I have to put up a twenty-four hour odd?
Tell you my line.
Here's the question.
Yeah, that's getting old.
Mr. Brown, I can tell you this, the issue is not, the issue is not at this point, with this, for myself.
I didn't bother him.
No, 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 I didn't say you didn't, not at all, what I'm saying is, we're waiting for an answer from above to allow us to move forward, okay? So I can't promise you it'll be tomorrow, if it was up to me, it'd be yesterday. Um, but, there are limitations to what can be done until we're told.
I would just love for anybody in this room, anybody in this room, to have to say, well, I have to listen to twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Beep, 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 all the time, that gets old real quick. No, you didn't, pal, I don't want to hear it.
I can, I can tell you, we had a big, big meeting about this, okay? I'm not pushing aside, I'm not telling you you're wrong, what I'm telling you is, we're taking it seriously, it's been going through the correct channels. I can't promise you it's going to happen tomorrow, but I can promise you something's happening, okay? I just, I can't be more specific than that because of.
Like I said, I'd just like for anybody in this room to have to live with what I have to live with, twenty-four hours a day. I have grandchildren that aren't allowed to come to my house, I'm counting that woman, and I have raised my children and my grandchildren in my home, and my grandchildren, my children won't bring their kids to Salisbury, you drive by it ten times a day, you don't hear that audible? No, sir, you don't hear it.
I, I just said.
I know you don't.
I didn't even say anything, I just said, yes, I do hear, but, as Joel said, we have to follow the proper channels, like, I'm not disagreeing.
I'll sit here six months from now and still be listening to the same audible, I'm, that's where I wouldn't be.
Is there any other public comment at this time? Please say your name, ma'am.
Tracy Buescher, I have two questions, one, in the budget, is there anything planned for road repairs for Mr. Walker, because Second Street from one end to the other literally is like a washboard in this town. I mean, there's like been no road work at all this summer, except Sustani Avenue. Is there any?
There is.
Money?
There is, there is liquid fuels money, okay, we got a lot of, right now, I got a lot tied up going into Packer Street, Packer Street's been our main focus, I've been saving for, I've been saving my major funds for years to try to get Packer done.
No, why, why can't, why can't those businesses up there, they're obviously, they're, they're.
We are, yes, and, we're talking with them about that, but we have to keep in mind, the other thing I'm running into on Packer, is Packer was never really a street from between the tracks. Back in the day, what people don't realize is, there was a walking bridge that went across the tracks. You went from, and there was never a roadway really underneath it, so the base, what I'm dealing with, I mean, there's terrible, so what I'd do is complete, I gotta pull that whole thing apart, and fully rebuild it. And, you know, we're, we're trying to get grants and everything else, but I'm covering my butt, like, saving my money, liquid fuels, and if I, if I free it up, and we get grants up on Packer, which we have grants in for it, then I can take more money out towards other things. And, you know, so we're just trying to work through it, and we're trying to work, we are releasing, I'm, I am releasing a campaign package at the end of this year, going to concentrate on the bad alleys in the city. We are releasing, I am releasing a paving package at the end of this year, I'm gonna concentrate on the bad alleys in the city, is where I'm working on it, okay? Just like I did down in the other end of town last, last year. We're gonna do out this year, it's gonna be fall cleaning, and everything, we have a contract going out probably in about three weeks.
Now, is there any officers or, is there any other places for you guys to be like regular patrolling in neighborhoods and stuff? I still hear a lot of people visiting, being stuck in whatnot, they don't see the police rally they used to. I'm gonna want to see you guys patrol a lot more, but... Is that all the sapping? And there's always a string coming in, right?
So, it's one of those ones that, we have four new open cases right now. We have, right now, we have two, we have two set-top home sites that are forced, we have a lot of houses that have been taken today. So, like, when you're in preparation, these cases, all these cases take the proper range. And, like, this takes, it's frustrating. I have an officer, I'm just... So we have that one, you know, who's...
Yeah, crime watch, you know, hold on.
No, I, my neighborhood's crime watch.
Well, I'm gonna say this, if anybody would like to volunteer to bring back the crime watch, we'll happily take in volunteers and happily bring it back. But once again, as...
I hope it's an officer gonna be in charge.
Well, like I said, it goes back to, we have to, we have to get it up and running before we get to that point. You know, as Mr. Shori said, volunteerism is down across everything. So if people wanna step up and be a part of it, we'll happily bring it back. We'll happily bring it back. I'll say this, this guy did not discontinue it.
I won't, I won't say go forth to the officer. I know you say cops and stuff, they are, they're there, they're working. At night, I mean, council has done a lot to get us past the bars. As long as people go work in its open, and you said...
Any other questions? All right. All right, I'm gonna go, I'll work on my back over, so go ahead, please say your name, sir.
Years ago, we used to have a full-time detective on the police department. It seemed to me, if you had an individual in that capacity, that would take some workroom off-control officer, so they could do more patrol.
Al, we're trying to get to that number of officers where we can do that. Now, if you just convince council to let me hire what's set in our ordinance, I'll happily get that full-time detective. And assess fifteen full-time officers in order, everybody wants to reach, just a second. Anything else, Al?
We need that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Please say your name, sir.
Bill Brown, I wanna commend you, Mr. Savage, for what you stood up for tonight with the water department. Thank you very much. And Jimmy Eister, to rehash a little bit of older stuff, sir. Did we not try subletting lawn service out, compliment your two front streets? How did that work? Okay, okay, that's all, that's the point I'm getting at there. It didn't work, Sally, it didn't work, you think that? That didn't work, it's no one or what, it did not work either. Thank you very much, sir. You're an asset to this council.
Please say your name, sir.
Norm Koch, Chairman of the Municipal Board of Work. On behalf of members of the board that are here, our many employees that are here, we're very concerned about this, perhaps, possible decision. I wanna thank council for their decisions tonight. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Please say your name.
Erica Miller-Russell, probably can't do anything about it, but the family doll, we, like, there's nowhere for senior citizens that work with the U T Department, there's nowhere for them to go besides the grocery store. And I know that transportation's coming, but for lots of people in high-rise, they can't go to get stuff. Air conditioning, something about air conditioning, but I don't know if I can...
They're closing all over.
Like I said, that's out of our hands, that's up to the business to do what they wanna do, see if it...
Right, well, we just, we're concerned like the dollar store will find out or something, we've got everyone.
Yeah, many things can, yeah, it's been closed for clearly no one knows.
It's been closed for like three weeks. Every time a customer comes in, they, the plaza, they're like, hi, they give them, it's open, why is it closed? Man, I don't know. Yeah, they're, they're saying it's cheap. The liquor store is open, yes. Law works is open, security office is open, but they're, they're, they didn't have air conditioning last year, so it was clean, and they're making workers work in it now. But there's no work for shop, as I, as I get, but it's...
Like I said, we're at the mercy of them, it's, like I said, it's their business, and I don't know if they own it or if that was made, it's up to those two, whoever, B T F next to them. I'll reach out. Norm, do you wanna say, is there anybody else? Anybody else? Julie, did you have a comment?
Yeah, like, for example, on the P A background, check for rentals. Instead of having this big cfiggle, like, does anybody check with other towns, cities, townships to see how they operate with rentals? Instead of having this argument kind of thing going on?
I mean, I...
So you, so that, so that...
Yeah, I don't, Julie, I don't know if the topic of having information in front of me, so I can't give you an accurate, I can't give you an accurate answer on who we reached out to, who we did, who got back. I can't say, the only thing I can do tell you is that other municipalities saw us on the agenda and reach out and say, hey, what do you guys wanna do, we like what you're trying to do? Can you pass on what your ideas were to them? That's the only information I can give you. I can't, it's not looking in front of me, the list, I can't say who we reached out to, what they do, without having it in front of me.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause the most important thing, regardless of what the topic is, fact-finding hurts nothing. Absolutely nothing.
All right, thank you, Julie, go ahead, please say your name, sir.
Norm Koch. I might extend an invitation to council, if you might come down and see what actually happens in the water plant, sewer plant, transfer station, if there's more to lock, you can speak up to Jason or Ben and Andrew, on behalf of your board of directors. Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? All right, join this meeting.